Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of May 19, 2009. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Chair Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi?
Here.
Commissioner Mishra?
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Vice Chair Marshall and Commissioner Samut should be on their way now.
Who? Vice Chair who?
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Chase is here. Commissioner Marshall and Commissioner Samut should be on their way.
Just for public record.
And Commissioner Peterson, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is approval of the minutes of April 21, 2009.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Move we approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Onto the next item. And communications from staff.
Just the usual one that you could find, the packets, the e-packets online at SanBruno.ca.gov. Look in the Community Development section under Planning Commission. So, all the staff reports are there as well as the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I also like to take this opportunity to ask everyone in the audience if you could please turn off your cellphones for the duration of the meeting. Thank you. And is there any conflict of interest from any of the commissioners with the items on the agenda? Hearing none. Also, the next item would be public comment, and these are for items that are not on the agenda. You're welcome to present them at this time. Okay, hearing none. Move on to 917 Masson Avenue. And this is a request for a use permit to legalize an unpermitted construction that would result in overall FAR above the .55 guidelines, which is .80. The 44 percent of a lot coverage requirement is 57 percent and exceeds 2,800 square feet of living space. And that space is 3,450 square feet without providing a third covered parking space for Section 12.200, .030B2, and 12-200, 030B3. And lastly, 12-200, 080A.3. And that's of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. The applicant is Ahmad Khan. He's the applicant and owner. And staff report, please.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. The applicant is currently making revisions to the plans, so planning staff recommends that we continue this item to the next available Planning Commission public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on this particular item? Hearing none, we'll close that public hearing and bring it back to Planning Commission discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Move we continue the use permit 8-26 to a future Planning Commission public hearing.
It's been moved in second to continue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item is 232 Elm Avenue. And that's a request for a use permit to allow the construction of an addition that would result in a floor area above the .55 guidelines. And it's to enlarge the parking area to over 600 square feet and a minor modification to allow a side setback of less than five feet per Section 12-200, 030B2, 12-200, 080B, and 12-120, 010A of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And the applicant is Dave Perez. And staff report, please.
Thank you, good evening. This application is for a use permit and a minor modification to allow the construction of a new attached garage. And the site is somewhat unique in that it has a two-story San Francisco-style house that we would normally see built right up to the property lines, but in this case, it's actually on a lot that's 52 feet wide. So, as a result, the side setbacks are just over five feet on one side, and on the other side, there's a 23-foot side setback. So, the applicant is proposing to utilize that large side setback to construct a new attached garage. They propose dimensions of 18 feet wide by six, I'm sorry, 18 feet, 6 inches wide by 41 feet, 10 inches deep. So, this would allow them to have a two-by-two configuration, so it would park four cars. So, two would be visible from the street and then two tandem behind. The homeowner has explained to staff and to the Architectural Review Committee that he collects cars as a hobby, and he currently pays to store the cars off-site. So, he would like to build this garage on his property so that all of his cars would fit onto the property and not be overflowing onto the street. The garage is also proposed to be set back, consistent with our standard of just over 20 feet, so they would be creating two additional driveway spaces with this project as well. So, it is wide enough to accommodate the two cars inside, and as you know, the standard is 20 feet wide, and so this is slightly less than the Municipal Code standard of 25 feet. And that's in balance with the side setback requirements and their minor modification request. So, their desire is to be as close to the Municipal Code standard as possible while still meeting their goals of being able to park two cars inside. So, the total floor area of the project would be 3,116 square feet, and that results in a floor area ratio of .60. So, again, the left-side setback would be five feet, 3 inches, and the right-side setback would be three feet, 8 inches. The applicant is using several design strategies in order to help integrate the garage into the site and reduce its prominence, most notably from the street. It'll look like parking for three cars since the two garage doors of the new garage will be visible. Also, those new garage doors are physically separated from the existing garage, and this is a common technique that we use to minimize the appearance of the garage. Also, the new garage would be set back from the plane of the existing house, about 21 feet. They've also integrated quite a few strong architectural elements that are complementary to the existing house. So, some of those notable architectural features include the new garage doors, which are of high quality and complementary to the design, which those are on the material board that's coming around now, redwood trellis over the new garage doors, pervious pavers at the front that are attractive and more environmentally sensitive to help mitigate some of that influence of having the larger driveway. And they've also chosen complementary colors to the existing house, and we'll talk about that a bit more in a moment. As you're probably aware, the 200 block of Elm has a range of architectural styles and building setbacks. There are also some pretty significant on-street parking issues in this area. It's mixed, really, in terms of style. And there are homes that are built directly on property lines. We see side setbacks, quite a few around four feet. Some of them have recessed garages in the back and long driveways, and so it's mixed in regards to the style of the homes in those setbacks. So, really, given this context, staff does support the request for the minor modification for the reduced setback. It would still have three feet, 8 inches, so we'd have adequate space for emergency personnel and also adequate light and air on the adjacent property. The garage is a one-story addition, and they are proposing a deck on the back of it towards the rear, but they have included some nice measures to mitigate any potential privacy impacts, and we have not heard any concerns from their adjacent neighbor. The project was heard at the April 16 Architectural Review Committee meeting, and at that meeting, the commissioners recommended a minor change to the landscaping that staff had recommended. The applicant has agreed to that. It's included as a condition of approval. The applicant was also asked to work with staff to make sure that the colors of the new garage were well-integrated with the existing home, and so staff and the applicant have discussed that, and they've prepared a new color rendering to share with you tonight. And I'll let the applicant describe that a little bit more in detail, but staff does support those changes. Our standard courtesy notices and legal notifications were sent to all of the neighbors. We have not received any questions or concerns. I'd also like to point out, because it is such a large garage area, that staff has reviewed the requirements for the vehicle repair at residential property, which you'll remember, this ordinance amendment came before you very recently. And so, they are aware of the restrictions on vehicle repair, and they have indicated that any repair that they did on their cars would be minor. It would be consistent with the code. It would not be a business operation or anybody else's vehicle. So, they are aware of those restrictions and do intend to comply with all of those. So, with that, staff recommends approval of use permit 09002 and minor modification 09001, based on findings 1 through 8, and conditions 1 to 25. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Thank you. And if the applicant?
I'm ready.
Yes, the public hearing will now be open, and you welcome the applicant and staff to the podium. And please state your name. And for the record, please.
My name is David Perez, and I'm the project designer and the applicant.
I'm Dave Bellis-Rossi, I'm the owner.
Okay, thank you. If you can just give us a description and give us your input for the project.
I just wanted to address some of the Architectural Review comments that were made at the Architectural Review Meeting with regard to the colors and the rendering. One of the comments were that we needed to find a way to help balance the new addition with the existing. So, with the revised rendering, what we tried to do was to help create a uniform balance between the existing house and the garage by incorporating both of the colors that are in the scheme, as you can see by the rendering above.
It's currently being passed around. Are there any questions of the applicant as we review the boards?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I saw on your material board that you had the cable trellis, but on the rendering, I don't see where it's going to be placed. Could you identify that?
Yes, actually, the cable trellis is actually intended to go in the rear of the property. So, there's a trellis, there's a couple of trellises in the back wood, and then we're going to have a metal cable trellis extending upward so that we can extend some vine and greenery to grow vertically. But at the front of the house, there's really no location that that's proposed.
Okay, the only thing I was concerned about is children climbing on that, which has been a problem in the past for those systems, is when I was looking for other projects. So, just bear that in mind.
Yeah. The donor doesn't have any kids, for one.
Well, since it's in the back, it's okay now, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if it was in the front, you would have that issue.
Right, and the intent is for it to get infilled with vines, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other question? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
You're welcome to sit. Is there anything you would like to add? Okay, it's fine.
Appreciate any consideration you take for this project. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this project? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed, and we take it back to Planning Commission discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase?
None of the other commissioners have any other questions or comments. I'd make a motion that we approve use permit 09-002 and minor modification 09-001, based on findings and facts 1 through 8, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 25.
It's been moved in second?
Seconds.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There is a 10-day appeal process before action can take place. And the next item is 2101 Sneed Lane, and it's a request for conditional use permit to construct a wireless communication system facility within a residential zoning district and a use permit to exceed the height limits for the district in which it is located for Sections 12-200 and 12-84, 160 of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. And Verizon Wireless is the applicant. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The applicant actually is making some last-minute revisions to the plans, so staff felt it was important that those revisions are reflected on the plans. They are, so staff recommends that the Planning Commission continue use permit 08-025 to the next Planning Commission public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the commission that would like to, I'm sorry, from this audience that would like to speak on this subject? Yes, you may, sir.
Can you tell me where this area is going to be put up in Sneed Lane?
The staff report was presented, but I don't know, planning director, if you'd like the staff report?
Sure.
Would you like to answer that?
Sure, it's at the San Bruno Golf Range, at the driving range, on one of the golf net poles. It would be mounted against the pole.
Against the pole?
Yeah.
Does that, will that not create a problem with the golf balls and all that kind of stuff?
No, there's, the question was, well, there could be damage sustained from the golf balls, and it's at a high enough point that that won't be the case. There's actually another one on-site there, and it's worked well, so. And if it is damaged, then that would be up for the Verizon to take care of and fix, and that's covered in the conditions of approval.
Is it, is it, the height less than the poles?
Same height. At the top of the pole, though.
So, it's the pole, and then it'll be, it'll be above the pole? Do you have the pole, and then it's going to be above the pole?
No, it would reach the maximum height of the pole, so it would not exceed the height of the pole.
Now, is San Bruno School District going to get a rent from that?
I don't know the lease details. The lease holder is VB Golf of the driving range site, and I'm not familiar with the lease details between VB Golf and the San Bruno Park School District.
Through the chair, just a point of order. I'd like to give the gentleman my staff report. It has tremendous amount of detail in it.
Oh, that'd be great, thank you.
And, would that help you?
Yeah, there, okay, whatever. But I'm concerned where, it's not going to be close to any place where it'd harm, get cancer and all that kind of stuff? Thank you. Okay.
I think that your concerns are warranted, sir, and initially, when these sites started to be erected, there was a lot of question, a lot of concern, and it was extremely researched. The commission and the staff particularly took a lot of time and care to be sure that they were completely in compliance. It's been many, many years this has taken place, and at this particular time, they have to meet even higher criteria. And I want to reassure you that every T is crossed, every I is dotted, and that if you have any continuing questions at the staff at the planning department, we'd be very happy to address them.
Now, there's another one of those things at the bottom, they say the garage's there. Did you, San Bruno, did you turn in there to Rollingwood Drive?
There's actually quite a few cell sites throughout, it's throughout San Bruno. They've been coming before us for a number of years, and they're very strategically placed. They are camouflaged in various ways, behind trees, in trees, to make it look like they're part of the environment. So, the communication systems have made every effort to comply with the request of the planning department and the Planning Commission, and I feel very confident to present to you, the confidence and to inform you that we've really, good work is done behind the scenes.
My main concern is that of the cancer scare, cancer scare, that will not affect anybody down the road?
Well, sir, I certainly could not answer that, because I am not in that position to, you know, I'm not a medical practice, but I'm certain that you can direct that question to our planning director or to our city attorney, and more importantly, I would urge you to go to the planning department to ask those questions. But in the presentation that has been given to us over the number of years, those questions were very, very clearly asked, and they have to meet compliance, federal regulations far beyond anything that we have. And so, I feel reassured that it has been done in the proper manner.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Through the chair.
That's Commissioner.
In case you would like to, in the event that you'd like to read over this material and study it, we are going, this is being continued, and we're going to hear this again next month. So, feel free to study that and come back next month if you'd like. You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Biassadi. That's an important point. Hi. If you can please step to the microphone and speak directly into the microphone. State your name and the city in which you represent.
Hi, my name is Hani Farag, and I am in Quail Point Homeowners Association. I know that the subject is not going to be discussed tonight, but there are some issues that even, I started scrambling some notes when I received the paper tonight, and I would like to put these points on record till the time comes in order for the commission to be studying the subject. They are sporadic, not organized, so please bear with me and accept them as they are. The first item that, you know, really came out at me was in the environmental assessment, the last sentence says minor expansion to existing facilities. You use the term expansion if you are having a facility that would do the same function as the existing facility or the existing structure. Here, we are dealing with something that has to do with wireless, with installations, with motor generator sets, and as the report would state, with electromagnetic interference. So, this is, this cannot be classified as minor expansion to existing facility. It has to deal with many other aspects and codes and standards, et cetera. I understand there is, would be a response to some of the concerns of the gentleman and other people would be, has to do with electromagnetic interference, and there is a statement here says that the applicant submitted a radio frequency report and is provided or prepared by a certain consulting engineer, and it would be really nice if this would be available for the people who would be interested to see it and who can understand it. The issues related to the construction as it is, the number-one issue is back to the business part of this proposal, which is how long this lease is going to be. The reason for this question is the same site had several years ago, I believe, if somebody here would have a longer history in the subject, would remember that there was a possibility of constructing a sport facility, and people spend a lot of money. There was a litigation. Part of the litigation was dealt with by Quail Point Homeowners Association. If this is going to be a long-term lease, so the people in the area can judge if this would be the best bet they can accept for this facility, that there will be nothing else. If it is 15-years lease, 20-years lease, this would preclude any other activity, and it will be judged on this merit. So, to judge it as a principle, it need to be accompanied with some kind of a business deal to give it a lifetime or a lifespan. Some of the scrambled notes I have, one issue has to do with unmanned facility. The area on the ground is accessible at any time. There is no fence. You can put a sign, but this would not preclude animal or people from going there. How this could be dealt with need to be defined. In addition, there is currently, and I didn't realize this until I saw the drawing, there is a camera on the top of the pole. I didn't know that there is a camera. If there is a camera there, and this camera is used for security, you need to have a light in order to use this camera. The situation now is at night, there is no light there. If you are going to use this camera as part of the surveillance for the structure, then the issue of having light would be considered. The other things has to do with the emergency diesel generator set. When you have a wireless communication, you need to have a standby power supply. It has to do with the amount of power generated. The plans doesn't give, or at least the plans I saw doesn't give a capacity. I would say anybody would appreciate if there is a diesel generator set, this would be underground. If there's a fuel tank, would be double containment, would be hidden, would be better protected than being like in a shack or something like this. When you have emergency diesel generators set, I know the codes for hospitals and hotels that need to be operated and tested. When this is going to happen, who is going to do it? People accept, of course. You will have some emissions when you try diesel generators.
Sir, I just wanted to acknowledge that you'll have that opportunity to really speak thoroughly at that and get some response. We're not able to respond since this is being continued. I also need to just remind you of a three-minute, with a three-minute per applicant.
Yeah, thank you for your time. I won't be able to come next time. It's really hard to make it to the city at this point, but I will follow up with email, and I consider everything I said now is on record.
That's excellent, and we'd be happy to receive that email.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're very welcome.
Goodbye.
Through the chair.
Yes.
A quick question for staff. Would you remind us on these issues that come before us as far as wireless facilities, what are we allowed to look at and what are we not?
I'll start with what you're not, what we're not allowed to look at as a city. What we're not allowed to look at is the health impacts from the emission frequencies, and that's why, as long as they meet the federal guidelines. So, what we require is that they turn in that frequency report, and if a certified engineer, licensed engineer, say that is certified for the federal levels, that's taken out of the equation. So, what we're looking at it from is a land use and an aesthetic standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, and then the next item of business is, oh, I'm sorry, I haven't even finished the last item of business. Moving right along, is there, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to commission discussion.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'd like to move that we continue this to the next time the applicant revises his plans. Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move along to item number D on the agenda, is the ordinance amending Chapter 12.220, regulating wireless telecommunications facilities. And this is a resolution that will be going towards the city council, and it does require a roll-call vote as well.
All right, thank you. I believe everyone was on the commission at the time. About three years ago, we put forward a telecommunications ordinance, and what it did was update our existing ordinance for cellphone antennas and cellphone towers. And the one that we had previously was over a decade old, so it wasn't a response to the newer facilities that were seen. Subsequent to the Planning Commission and the city council adopting that ordinance, the state also enacted guidelines that each local ordinance must be consistent with. And for the most part, our guidelines are consistent with it, but there are several cleanup items that we have to bring forward to you tonight. You may also remember from our ordinance that we encourage co-location. Well, the state ordinance also did encourage co-location in all areas of a city. And what the state ordinance said is, if a city is reviewing an application for a new co-locating cellphone antenna, they have to review that administratively. That can't go through a discretionary use permit. So, if someone is going, and let's say that cell site was approved tonight, and someone a year down the line wants to put up one more antenna for another cellphone carrier, we would have to approve that through the building permit process and not through the use permit process. That's just for co-location of antennas. What the ordinance, what the state law also says, that is for any new cellphone tower, though, a completely new cellphone tower, regardless of what area of town it's in, that has to go through a public hearing process. So, that's the second change that we have in, within our ordinance. Currently, our ordinance says that if you're in, if you're within a commercial area or an industrial area and you meet stealth requirements, it could be approved administratively by the planning department, by the community development director. So, what this would change is that we would have to publicly notice it now if there's a new cellphone tower on El Camino or a new cellphone tower on Montgomery Avenue. So, those are the two small changes. After reviewing this ordinance, we also noticed that there was a few inconsistencies with our definitions in terms of defining cellphone antenna versus cellphone tower, and we did not include that within the ordinance, but we would request that the Planning Commission put within, add to the resolution that's before you tonight, recommending that staff clarify the definitions between the state ordinance and the local ordinance. So, with that, I could take any questions.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Chase?
In regards to a co-location versus, you know, a new pole, what's the, what would be the boundaries of a co-location? I mean, could somebody, you know, theoretically say, okay, well, yeah, you got the golf course and the driving range there, and there is an antenna there on one area of, you know, that property? And on the far end, you know, where there's no pole, but we're going to erect a new pole, although there's- erect a new pole, although there's a telecommunication pole on the front end, but it's, you know, so far removed from where this other one is proposed. I mean, what are the parameters for a new location or a co-location?
I think the easiest way to define that, it has to be part of the same cellphone tower. So, you know, if you have your own cellphone tower, like the applicant before us was proposing to do, it would have to be part of that tower structure and not part of a completely separate one. It also, another thing I didn't point out, it also still has to be consistent with the previous discretionary permit. So it has to be considered, consistent with the previous use permit conditions of approval, including stealth design.
So the erection of a new pole at the driving range would not be, would not just be, it would come before the Planning Commission?
Correct.
Because of the new, the whole new pole?
Correct.
But if they had an existing one, they were just adding some new equipment on to it, then it just goes to the permit process, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It goes through the building permit process.
That's what I meant, yes. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. I mentioned this is a resolution and roll call vote. Is there a recommendation? Oh, thank you. I'd like to open it now to the public. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this project? Hearing ended. Public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to commission.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I move the commission, move the commission adopt the resolution, waive the reading. Oh, you mean and add the, that the staff review the resolution between our language and state language and reconcile them?
It's been moved? Well, actually, it's not a move in second, is it?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
And then it's a roll call now. Okay. Commissioner Samut?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chase?
Aye.
Chair Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bisari?
Aye.
Commissioner Mishra?
Aye.
And Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. And on to discussion, city staff discussion, selection of the Architectural Review for June the 11th meeting.
Commissioner Bisari?
Aye, ma'am.
Anyone else? Commissioner, Chair Johnson?
Sure.
And Commissioner Mishra? All right.
I'll be a backup.
And is there any Planning Commission discussion at this time?
I do have one thing I forgot to say. You noticed that Shawna isn't here tonight. She has left on maternity leave, and I believe she is actually giving birth to her baby girl today, so I'll have more updates at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Good. Look forward to hearing it.
Congratulations to her.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Bersetti?
And I'd like to remind the folks at home who haven't voted yet that there's still 25 minutes to get to the polls.
And we'd like to thank Commissioner Johnson for letting that occur, because I gotta go.
Hearing anything else? The other commission is adjourned.